Oh, Mosher?
Yeah, I'm not sure I needed you to add, but.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the August 17th Planning Commission meeting to order. Commissioner Langford, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind joining me.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, staff, roll call.
All commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Bartow, who is excused, and Commissioner Lowry, who is absent.
Great, okay, we'll move on to public comment. This time, we'll take public comments on items that are not on the agenda and are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Any public comment items? Seeing none. Request for continuances, staff, are there any requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, there are no requests for continuances.
Okay, moving on, consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of August 3rd. Would anybody from the audience like to speak on the meeting minutes from August 3rd? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to us for a motion and/or a second.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with Mr. Mosher's comments.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, moving on to public hearing items. Item number two, this item is the Pacific Christian High School enrollment increase, PA 2023-007, site location 1499 Monrovia Avenue, 883 West 15th Street, 1515 Monrovia Avenue, 877 Production Place. Staff, will you please proceed with your presentation?
Thank you, good evening commissioners, my name is Jocelyn Perez, I'm with the Planning Division. The public hearing item for your consideration this evening is a conditional use permit and a traffic study to authorize an enrollment increase and off-site parking for Pacifica Christian High School.
Hang on a moment, we have some public, we have some technical difficulty here with the presentation.
Do you want me to call a short recess?
Sure, that'd be fine, but I got a question, can you see the presentation on your monitors?
No.
You cannot see it, okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call a quick two-minute recess until we get this figured out.
Yep, thank you. Well, that does for that delay.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, my name is Jocelyn Perez, I'm with the Planning Division, and this is the conditional use permit and traffic study for an increase in student enrollment for Pacifica Christian High School. First and foremost, where is Pacifica Christian within our city? Pacifica Christian operates two campuses over in the West Newport Mesa neighborhood with a main campus that's accessed from Monrovia Avenue and an auxiliary campus for extracurricular activities accessed from 15th Street. The proposed off-site lots for parking are shaded in blue and include Coastline College and 877 Production Place. The zoning of the main campus is private institutions and the zoning for the auxiliary campus is public facilities, both of which allow schools with the approval of a use permit. Surrounding land uses are primarily residential with the exception of that gray strip of property up near the top of the figure, that area is zoned industrial, and the triangle off to the left of the figure, while there are different zoning districts, that area is primarily used for schools with Carden Hall at the north, Coastline College, and Pacifica Christian at the south. A brief history of Pacifica Christian, I'm not going to read this word for word, I'm just gonna highlight that Pacifica Christian was originally established through a minor use permit in 2014 and operated out of the West 15th Street location. The most recent approval in November of 2021 authorized the use of both campuses and off-site parking. That November 2021 date is important, I'd like to point that out, and I'll speak to that in future slides. The school currently operates with a maximum of 305 students, 35 staff, 137 parking spaces. School term is generally from August through June with hours typically from 7:30 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. The request is to increase the number of students to 385, increase the number of staff to 50, and provide additional off-site parking spaces for a total of 170 parking spaces. There's no change to the hours of operation or the school term, and the increase in students and staff will be accommodated by the existing facilities. There are no additions proposed to the school or increase to the number of classrooms. To implement the project as proposed requires the approval of a conditional use permit, and that's to increase the school enrollment and to authorize the use of off-site parking, and the project requires the approval of a traffic study due to the increase in number of average daily trips to the site, which I'd like to speak about a little more in-depth on my next slide. The way the city's traffic phasing ordinance is written requires the cumulative analysis of any new trips within a 24-month period. This goes back to that November 2021 date I pointed out on the background slide. The current use permit for Pacifica Christian was approved in November of 2021, which was 20 months ago. That's within that 24-month period, so it has to be analyzed with the current project. When you put those two together, the total number of average daily trips is over 300, which triggers the need for a traffic study. A traffic study was prepared by LSA Associates, it was reviewed and accepted by the city traffic engineer, and there are no impacts to the level of service at the eight primary intersections studied. Next, I'd like to discuss parking. The zoning code states that the required parking rate for schools is established by use permit. The applicant retained Gibson Transportation to perform a parking demand analysis and found that the total demand for parking spaces for students, staff, visitors, and whatnot is 147 spaces, meaning that the total number of spaces provided by Pacifica, 170, results in a small surplus. The 170 spaces are provided through the combination of four sites, the main campus, the auxiliary campus, and Coastline College, with the somewhat unique site of 877 Production Place, I point, I want to point that one out as that site is for staff only. That 877 Production Place is located in the industrial zoning district and schools are not in allowed use in the industrial zone, so Pacifica's leasing out the entire building and the use of that building will be limited to storage and office space for administration and staff. In the worst-case scenario, a staff member parking at Production Place, if they had to walk to the auxiliary campus, they're only walking about a third of a mile, which is about a five-to-seven-minute walk, depending on ability, which is an appropriate distance, and that is the longest worst-case scenario for a walk. As part of the parking analysis, there was a queuing analysis prepared by Gibson. This figure shows the schematic for how drop-off and pickup will be implemented at the school. Staff has received communications regarding the project and communications that expressed concern primarily focused on traffic queuing, so this slide, this topic, I'll have the applicant speak to in their presentation for more in-depth explanation of what strategies are being implemented to help manage that queuing. In order to recommend approval of a use permit, staff is required to make the following findings, which I have listed up there, I'm not gonna read through all of them, but on the left, I have the findings for the increased enrollment, and on the right, the findings to recommend approval of off-site parking. Essentially, the increased enrollment comes down to, is the proposed use compatible with the surrounding neighborhood? Will it jeopardize the health and well-being of the surrounding residents, or will it exacerbate a nuisance or a troubled condition? And then for off-site parking, is the off-site parking location realistically going to be used by the staff that's parking there, the students that are parking there, or are they gonna park on the street, and will it be actually available? Based on the operational characteristics of the school and the off-site parking locations, along with the conditions that staff has included in the draft resolution, staff is able to make the findings to recommend approval of the project. Now, I'd like to highlight some of the conditions of approval that are included in the resolution that will help ensure the compatibility that I've spoken to. Some of the conditions include limits on the number of students and requirements to maintain the off-site parking as described in the project description provided by the applicant, as well as as described in my presentation. One condition I'd really like to highlight is Condition of Approval Number 41, and that's the requirement for the applicant to amend their operations if there are issues with queuing or vehicles in the public right-of-way. Schools do tend to have congestion, it is one of the traits of a school, so this condition is written in a way that's flexible enough that there's not a specific prescribed requirement, but it allows the applicant some flexibility to work with the city and try out strategies that will help mitigate or help dispel any problematic conditions. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the project. The next steps would be to conduct a public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit and the traffic study. I'm available for any questions, the applicant is also available, they're going to present next, but if you have any questions for me first, I can, I can answer them before we move on to their presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Langford.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Condition 13, I just wanted to get clarification on the intention of the special events permits. There were some kind of large events that were kind of highlighted, open house, back-to-school nights, are those examples of events that do need a permit or don't need a permit?
My thought is that those types of events are common for schools, right? And so they would be within the normal operational characteristic of a school, you know, it is part of our analysis, you know, so we expect those nights to be, to have obviously a bit different traffic generation than it would be in the evening. But these, this would apply for any other events that might not otherwise be normal for a school, you know, if they have some sort of festival or some other event that might generate significant amounts of traffic, they might have to get a special event permit.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, just the way it was written, I couldn't, it wasn't clear to me whether that was, what the intention was, but that would be what I would want it intended to be written as, so thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, any ex parte communications, start down with Commissioner Vice Chair Rosine.
I had a telephone conversation with the applicant's consultant.
I visited the site.
None, none from you?
None.
Okay, okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, does the applicant wish to provide a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Elmore, members of the commission, I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Pacifica Christian School in this application tonight. Before I begin my presentation, I'd like to thank city staff, including Jocelyn Perez and Brad Summers, for working with us on this application. But Jocelyn's provided a pretty good overview, I'm gonna try to fill in some gaps here and paint some color on this. The school was opened in 2015 at 883 West 15th Street with a cap of 185 students and 18 faculty members. In 2021, the city approved the new Monrovia Campus and increased enrollment to 305 students and 35 faculty members. The majority of classrooms are now located at the Monrovia Campus, with arts, athletics, extracurriculars located at the 15th Street Campus. And here you see both of those campus buildings. Tonight, we are requesting that the Planning Commission approve the Use Permit Amendment to increase student enrollment from 305 to 385, to increase faculty from 35 to 50, to authorize additional off-site parking at Coastline Community College, and to authorize new off-site parking at 877 Production Place, and also to approve the TPO analysis. The student enrollment request to, to increase the enrollment, I should say, is mission-based. The higher enrollment will ensure a robust academic and extracurricular offering at the school, and it is based on the financial viability of the school in the long term. Enrollment will be increased over time with approximately 316 students anticipated for the 23-24 school year. There will be no new classrooms or any other physical changes proposed. The off-site parking currently is allowed at Coastline Community College, where there are 35 off-site spaces. We are requesting an increase to 45 spaces, and again, a new parking location for staff-only 23 spaces at 877 Production Place. And here you can see Coastline and Production Place in yellow with the existing campuses in red. Student parking is provided, and I'm gonna go back to this one while I talk, if I can. I have lost control of the clicker, but let's see what happens. Is it possible to go back to Slide 7, please? If you just hit 7, enter, it should take us there. So, while we're getting there, I'll talk. Student parking is provided, here we go, at the Monrovia Campus, at the 15th Street Campus, and also at Coastline Community College. The school's Student Code of Conduct requires a parking permit to drive to school and prohibits driving and parking on the residential streets or anywhere. If you do not have a parking permit, you may not drive to school. Juniors and seniors are eligible for the parking permits, and there is a limit of one permit per family. 89 permits are anticipated for the 23-24 school year, and student parking spaces are assigned, meaning that students do not have to drive through the various sites looking for a spot, they know exactly where they're going, they pull in and they park. Thank you. Let's see, okay, hopefully, oh, I'm sorry, would you take me back and I'll just ask you to advance? Thank you. A parking study was prepared by Gibson Transportation Consultants in consultation with Public Works. The school's parking demand is 147 spaces, which is based on the proposed number of students and the faculty cap. The parking study concluded that the parking demand is met through the supply of on- and off-site parking. Next slide, please. And here you can see again those parking locations with the numbers, 170 parking spaces are provided, resulting in a 23-space surplus. Next slide, please. A traffic study was prepared consistent with the city's TPO. The city selected LSA to prepare the study, and eight area intersections were analyzed. You can see these intersections here. There was a net increase in 174 average daily trips, and no traffic impacts were identified by the study. Next slide, please. A queuing analysis was prepared by Gibson Transportation Consultants in consultation with Public Works. This was a conservative analysis, there was no reduction taken for late start or early dismissal, or students participating in extracurricular activities. The recommended vehicle storage length is 550 feet, and the available storage length is 725 feet, with 450 available at Monrovia, 275 at 15th Street. So the study concluded that there is adequate queuing capacity onsite between the two campuses. Next slide, please. And here you can see the queuing patterns, the blue, it's, it's a little kind of blue-greeny, the blue represents the onsite stacking of vehicles at both the Monrovia and the 15th Street campuses. The purple represents the loading and unloading areas for students, and the red represents the staff, faculty, security, and crossing guards that are all used to help during drop-off and pickup. Next slide, please. And here's just another example of that, you can see the, the various school personnel, safety personnel listed at all of the different points in the parking lots. Next slide, please. So while the stacking length onsite is adequate, queuing is always a concern at schools during drop-off and pickup for a short period of time every school day. The school recently met with two local residents that have expressed concern with the impacts of school traffic on safety and quality of life. Based on these neighborhood concerns, the school has identified four new measures to improve the queuing at drop-off and pickup. We have discussed these measures with city staff, and Condition of Approval 41 has been modified to allow city staff to change the conditions as they feel is necessary, and the school is agreeable to that. Next slide, please. So these, these four measures that we are proposing are to stagger drop-off and pickup by class level. So ninth grade and 11th grade would get dropped off, 10 minutes later, 10th and 12th grade would be dropped off. That will expand the drop-off and pickup times. Pickup will commence 10 minutes after school dismissal. The school gets out at 2:50, cars will not be allowed to start picking up until 3:00 p.m. This will allow students to get into place where they are to be picked up to improve the efficiency of the pickup procedures. Driveways will be closed until pickup time to discourage early queuing. And while this might not make a lot of sense, I can tell you anecdotally, my school, my daughter's school, recently started doing this in this past year, and it has helped dramatically. We cannot queue up before those cones open up, and when I used to wait 30 minutes to get into school, now it's 10 or 15. It is incredible how much the parent education and physically preventing the parents from queuing up will change the queuing patterns. And the fourth one is that vehicles will be directed to loop around if their student is not in the pickup location, letting cars continue to circulate through the site and not causing backups. Pacifica Christian School is committed to working with the city traffic engineer, community development, and the neighbors to address these ongoing queuing concerns. We have reviewed and agree with all of the conditions of approval as amended, and we request approval of the use permit and the TPO consistent with the staff recommendation. I'm available if you have any questions, and we appreciate your time tonight.
Great, thank you very much. While I have you there, I'm gonna have you repeat that last one one more time, just to make sure that you're in agreement with all the conditions of approval.
I know you like to hear that, so I put it right in. Yes, we have reviewed the conditions of approval, we are in agreement. I, I did happen to review Condition 13 while Commissioner Langford just asked about it, perhaps we might think about a suggestion or ask if the city wants to do that, because I, I think it's written in a way that is a little confusing. Otherwise, we are in agreement with all conditions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions of the applicant? I'll start down with Commissioner Saleem.
Thank you for the presentation. Real quick, have these additional queuing strategies, have you discussed those with any of the residents within the Newport Knowles community?
I was not in town when the meeting took place on August 9th, so I have not personally discussed those. It's my understanding that those strategies were discussed, and I don't know that they are in agreement with them. I think that it can be hard to live by a school, and there's, you know, some, some conflict in, in opinion there, but what we have done is worked with city staff and modified the condition to allow city staff to dictate what happens.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rosine? Vice Chair.
I like the idea of parent education on this, and I think that that will make a big difference. So I'm wondering, have you had an opportunity to start that program yet?
I have seen draft emails and outreach, I'm not sure whether any of this has occurred yet, because we don't know what might happen tonight and whether you might have additional input, but I think we're pretty ready to go, I'm gonna peek at my client. So yes, that outreach has already started to occur on multiple occasions.
Commissioner Harris?
Hi, thank you. Just confirming, these are, these are new plans, right? The staggered start and the shutting off the parking lot, everything, it's kind of new implementation?
This is brand-new.
Perfect, perfect, and there's probably gonna be some growing pains, but I, so my daughter goes to Carden, and it sounds like you're taking some of their, a page from some of their, you know, book. And I know that they had us redirect, hopefully it took a little congestion off, but I, I do like that idea, and, you know, hammering home, I know it's gonna take a little bit for the parents to get used to it, but hopefully that'll alleviate a little bit. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, Ms. Schaffner, thanks. What's going on at Coast Community College? It's nice that the school's been able to pick up some extra spots from them, but can they afford to lose those spots? Do they have a problem with parking, too?
No, they do not have a problem with that. They offer such a rich variety of programs that it often are at different hours in the evenings, other times. The parking is available, and that's how we were able to secure 10 more spaces.
Are those, are those dedicated spaces, too? Are they closest to Pacifica, I imagine?
They do, and I have a slide, perhaps we could pull it back up. If we could go to page, let's see, 25, please, actually, 24, please. And just hit 24 and enter. Here we go. So Coastline is highlighted in blue at the very top of the screen, and the parking is located, you can see that mint-green path that's dashed, it's located in that area that provides a nice walking path off of the city streets directly to the Monrovia Campus.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
For the staff moving over to Production, will there, will that provide some more spaces? Where does that, the staff's moving over there, I'm assuming, where do they predominantly park now? Do you know?
I, I don't know, would you like me to check with my client on this chair?
I'm just, I guess the question is, does it provide a little more surplus by moving them all there predominantly, and, you know, they're gonna open some more up at Coastline or wherever it would be? Okay.
So, yeah, he's just said they will move from Coastline to Production, for the record.
Thank you, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you for your applicant.
Thank you.
For your presentation. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up to the audience for At this time, I'll go ahead and open up to the audience for public comment. Anybody in the audience wish to make a public comment? Please step forward. Keep your, state your name, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Elmore and members of the Planning Commission, good evening, and my name is Aubrey Callahan, and I'm a senior at Pacifica. Tonight, I speak as representative of my Pacifica community to express our gratitude for your dedication and invaluable work in our community. Your commitment to shaping our city's future through thoughtful planning and decision-making is commendable. Pacifica encourages us students to cultivate what is good and beautiful in life and mend what is broken in our world. Thank you for doing good work here. Thank you to the Newport Beach city staff who have worked tirelessly to help Pacifica realize our dream to establish a school in Newport Beach that really loves teenagers and provides us with a great education. We are truly grateful. We also thank our neighbors for their general kindness and hospitality as we live together in West Newport. It's a beautiful place, and we are thankful to call it home. We are here to advocate for this critically important amendment. Much of the discussion is rightly focused on the vital work of drop-off and procedures, transportation and carports, and parking policies. But for us students, it's also about our mission and desire to bring more young people into this intentional and exceptional learning community. This June, I will join hundreds of other Pacifica alumni, as will several others here with me tonight, who have been taught to think and live well. We hope to enter our world prepared to cultivate and contribute to what is good, true, and beautiful. Our alums are well-equipped to lead organizations, launch new businesses, serve the church, care for the broken-hearted, and positively impact thousands of others wherever we live, work, worship, and play. Pacifica is not a perfect place, but it is a good place for teenagers, and we need more places and people that believe in us and provide compelling visions for our lives. On behalf of our student body and all future trainees, thank you for your consideration of our request and your time and dedication to our city's planning and well-being.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Hi, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Jen Kong. I'm a resident at Newport Knowles. I live at the end of 15th and Monrovia Street, so I am directly impacted as the front door of my home is facing 15th and Monrovia, where the second location is. I'm here tonight because I'm against the Pacifica Christian High School enrollment increase, and I'd like to state two reasons. My first is the traffic-related congestion has increased since the second opening. It's, I was already, it has increased and is already worse due to the second opening, so I imagine with the additional 80 students and additional staff, it will get worse. So there's insufficient traffic control, and there's extreme traffic congestion at pickup and drop-off time. Specific that it impacts my life is the pickup time at the end of the day. I am not able to turn left at the 15th Street and Monrovia intersection, and often I'm waiting there 20 to 30 minutes. This impacts me in the morning. It's, you know, not too bad, five to 10 minutes, but when I'm coming home, sometimes I'm waiting 20 to 30 minutes, and that impacts my work as well as when I'm on my way to and from to see my clients and for my livelihood. The second reason that I'm against this is due to safety. On multiple occasions due to the traffic, I have seen cars cross the double line and beat driving at a high speed to get into the drop-off. I don't know if this is parents, because sometimes I see cars cutting in line as well as other residents, and there's a memory care facility that often requires emergency vehicles that need to turn left to get down 15th and Monrovia. So in conclusion, you know, I moved to the neighborhood so I can live and raise a family on a very nice, quiet street at the end of a cul-de-sac without a lot of cars and speeding with plenty of parking for my friends and family to visit. So I do have concerns due to what was presented. I know that there was a traffic study, but there was not a traffic study completed at the 15th and Monrovia intersection, which is the main one that impacts Newport Knowles residences. So I just wanted to bring that up to ensure that we can all live in a great community with a great environment for both the school and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Eric Ferling. I, too, live in Newport Knowles at the end of, at the end of Monrovia. There's one way in and one way out. That's it. Most schools, you plan a city, you have a school, ingress and egress is planned. That didn't happen here. Pacifica Christian moved into existing facilities that were not designed to be a school, so therefore, it's not functioning as a normal school would. Now, we've brought up the traffic concerns. I've sent the committee pictures of traffic as it backs up down Monrovia. Now, the proposed change in the traffic pattern is not, quote-unquote, entirely new. It's not. The, some of the staggered things they talked about is, however, that curly queue fashion by which cars enter, move through, and leave, that has always been in place. In January or February, I forget the exact date, I contacted Pacifica Christian saying, "We have a major traffic problem here. You need to deal with this. This is suffering our, this is hurting our quality of life." And we were told, "Oh, we're working on it. We're going to, we're going to improve it. We're going to get it fixed." It hasn't happened yet. So either Pacifica Christian cannot do what they intend to do in terms of improving the situation, or they're being disingenuous with telling us they're going to try and improve it, because conditions have never improved despite the fact that they kept telling us they're going to improve. They have a choice as to where they have their campuses. They have a choice as to how many students they have. They have a choice, the parents have a choice as to where they take their, their kids. We, the residents at Newport Knowles and the surrounding community, we don't have a choice. I've lived there 20 years, right? Am I going to move because they want to add 85 students to their enrollment, and they can't even manage what they have now? Why don't they fix the problem they have today before you allow them to expand?
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Hawthorne. I am also a resident at Newport Knowles. I think maybe some of you have heard from my wife, Stacy. I just want to speak on behalf of her as well. But just to reiterate what my neighbor said, I think the main concern is the traffic. Again, this, this traffic study is a little bit curious to me. I looked at the map. I saw the intersections. I'm not really sure why they chose those eight, and they didn't choose to study that intersection at 15th and Monrovia. That's where the problem is. Getting, getting out of there is, can be quite difficult between the hours of, you know, 3:00 and 4:00. Again, as I've mentioned, too, I think there is the Newport memory care facility down there as well. There are ambulances going down there frequently, so if that's blocked off and emergency traffic can't get through, I think that's, you know, a safety concern as well. So just want to address a couple of points here I found in these findings. So specifically, point C, design location, operating characteristics of user compatible with allowed uses in the vicinity, and finding, or facts in support of finding, that's basically, it says, "Demonstrated lack of complaints and a lack of code enforcement cases." We've complained quite a bit, so I'm not really sure why that's in there. That's just false. There's also another issue here. Let's see. I guess I already spoke about the safety aspect. That was under finding D. Finding E, operation of the use of the location proposed will not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city. Again, just health and safety aspects are, that's what I'm trying to get back there. And yeah, I agree with my neighbor Eric here, too. Like, the situation's already not great as of today, so we'd appreciate it if they were to address the concerns that we have today. And if they can do that, you know, then maybe going forward, then maybe there's a path to expanding enrollment. But if there's already a problem right now, I don't see how adding more students is going to fix the issue. So we just prefer that they, we fix the problem we have now and then possibly address enrollment going forward. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
My name is Jim Stratton. I've been a resident, my wife and I have been residents of Babola Peninsula for about 20 years, and we're familiar with Pacifica Christian. And just simply want to say that, that Pacifica has been a real asset to the city of Newport Beach, and I think if, if they need to increase their enrollment in order to remain viable, I think, I think this is, this is a good thing to do. And so I would encourage you to approve their, their proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none at the time. The applicant, would you wish to respond to any of the comments that were made? Final remarks?
Thank you again, Shawna Schaffner, representing the applicant. I hear what the residents are saying, and I think that their concerns are valid. It is hard to live by a school. Also, these are 10-to-20-minute periods twice a day for 144 days out of the year. These new measures will greatly improve both the parents and also the student availability for pickup, which is the biggest concern. Right now, we're talking about an increase of enrollment, nine students. That's the request that we're anticipating for the coming year. We think that with condition 41, we can work with the city and continue to change measures if, if there are problems. But I think that the queuing analysis was thorough. The new measures are very good, and staff have written themselves enough flexibility to allow to put their thumb on Pacifica and make them do it right.
Thank you. Thank you, Shawna. Staff, any comments for the record or any clarifications?
First of all, I'd just like to maybe take a look and revisit condition number 13, if that would be the commission's pleasure. You know, and that relates to special event permits. I would want to maybe revise that condition and make it tailored a little bit to eliminate the confusion that you saw. And if the commission is willing, I can read something to the record here. Maybe make it to revise to say, "A special event permit is required for any event or promotional activity outside the normal operational characteristics of Pacifica Christian School as conditioned." Or that would attract large crowds, strike open house, strike back-to-school nights, et cetera, and insert "and include any form of site media broadcast or other activities specified by the Newport Beach Municipal Code that requires such permits." Would exclude those two kind of typical operational characteristics. But if there was some sort of event or festival or something like that, then that would require a special event permit. Obviously, we've heard a fair amount about some of the congestions on the street. You know, I think the applicant indicated nine students for an increase. Well, that, that's kind of the projected enrollment starting, you know, next month. Obviously, there's an 80-student increase over time that would come forward. You know, staff does feel confident that through the exercise of condition number 41, the diligence of the traffic engineer, monitoring the activities, the applicant's willingness, not only willingness to implement those conditions, but to work with us to try to address the queue and to kind of reduce the congestion, I think we can go forward. I, I think we all recognize that at schools, there's always a little bit of congestion around pickup and drop-off times, and so Pacifica Christian is no different than that. We feel that the congestion that's out there is pretty customary for a school of this size. We don't see the increase in enrollment or the students, faculty to really exacerbate it significantly. And I think with the implementation of condition 41, we can address any additional happening out there. But I think it would be also fair to say that it, that there won't be any congestion out there. We can't, we won't be able to get to that level of, of operation here. And I think with the applicant's willingness to implement those measures and then try additional things that we might collectively come up with, with maybe consultation with the residents, the parents, the traffic engineer, we can come up with other measures to address it as best that we can, and we feel under those conditions, we can move forward.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to this body for any comments, discussion, deliberation, or a motion. I'll start, Commissioner, for anything.
Yeah, thank you for everyone for coming out tonight. Your input is, is helpful. And thank you for designated one person to champion your cause on the Pacifica side. That helps speed this thing along. I'm thoughtful to Newport Knowles. It's hard being by a school. I live next to a school. My kids go to even a different school than the one I live by and impacted by the traffic, especially one that you, what became a school after you moved in. But that being said, I like what has been done. It seems like a very thoughtful plan. Pacifica seems like a great operator, so I'm inclined to vote in favor.
Great. Commissioner Celine?
Thank you. While I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Langford, my concern is, it would seem to me that we should ferret out the issue before they're allowed to increase the enrollment. We have, they have alternatives. They have things that they can work through. Unfortunately, Brad has not been able to go out there during school time to see the issues, which is, you know, we're getting there very, very shortly. It seemed to me like, let's try some of these alternatives. Let's see what works, what doesn't work, before we allow them to exacerbate the problem. You know, I would hate to have, you know, with condition number 41, that requires the residents of Newport Knowles to constantly complain if there's an issue, to bring it up, to, to create the urgency to get somebody out there to change things. It just seems, it just seems premature to me to, to increase the enrollment before the, before the issue's been resolved. I don't have any problem with the parking or the, or necessarily the idea of increasing the enrollment, but it does seem to be a problem for residents who, again, didn't ask for this, didn't move in knowing that this was going to be there. And it seems we should ferret it out before allowing this to increase.
Great, thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Rosine, Commissioner Harris? Vice Chair?
Yeah, I think what we're going to hear is that we're going to hear that it's difficult to live, to live next to a school. And that's really the issue at hand. The school is doing their best efforts to come up with solutions to what is a queuing problem by acknowledgement of all parties. And so everyone's working towards a positive outcome here. We have the ability of condition 41 to, for the city and the traffic engineer to step in and say, "This isn't working." I understand that that does require potentially having someone to complain. That's unfortunate. But maybe we could take a proactive stance and have the traffic, Brad, onsite for, you know, for some period of time that staff could certainly come up with on their own and give them an opportunity to prove themselves. And I feel like this is something that's, can be supported with the community and working with, with the school. So, and, and the city. So I feel like this is going in the right direction, and I could be supportive of this CUP and traffic study.
Any other comments? The record?
Sure, if I may?
Yes.
To your point, Commissioner, yes. As a normal course of business for the traffic engineering department, we do-
Sorry, which Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rosine.
Commissioner Rosine, thank you.
Pardon me. As a normal course of business, traffic engineering does monitor schools. It's quite common for us. We're heading into our school season generally with the public schools. And then with the meaningful conversations I've had with the community, we've already pledged to put traffic engineering staff out around Pacifica Christian to monitor what's going on, look for solutions even within the public right-of-way, not just programmatic solutions that the applicant can help us with as well. So it, it is something that we already intend to do. Generally, we wait till school kind of settles in. You know, I, having school-age kids myself, I know it's pretty chaotic for the first few weeks, but then that's when my staff will start going out to other schools throughout the city, and this one is on the list now.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do we have a, a motion?
I will make the motion to approve PC 2023-031 with the clarifying language presented by Deputy Director Campbell. No. Yes. Okay, thank you.
Or condition 13?
Condition 13, yes.
The chair is going to second that, and just a few comments on this. You know, it is conditional in terms of the fact that I think if the, if the public understands that or feels that it's not working, that the proper channels are to communicate to the city, and that the conditional basis for what it is will come back up for review and, and to be looked at again and challenged. I think, I think the analysis that was done was very thorough. I don't think there will ever be a perfect solution, but I think what staff has done and, and the analysis and what they have put forward is, is the best possible solution for what we have here, and I think it, it should have a chance to work. So with that, I'll, I'll second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Celine voting no.
Great. Congratulations to the applicant. Moving on. Item number three, motion for reconsiderations. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Okay, seeing none. Item number four, report by the community development director or a request for matters of which a planning commissioner would like to place on a future agenda item? Jim? Jim?
Sure, certainly. So we did not have a planning, a city council hearing last week, so, you know, it is a dog day, it's the summer, if you will. So we do have a city council meeting next meeting, and there are no planning commission action items that are going forward there. So we, we do have a city council, a planning commission meeting on September 7th with two items, code amendment for a property on White Sales Way, and then we have the House coming back from your last meeting. That'll be coming back. And so, you know, in addition, we'll be bringing forward, you know, we have the noise-related amendments that you saw at the last meeting. We did have an ALUC meeting, an Airport Land Use Commission meeting this afternoon. The Airport Land Use Commission did find the amendment inconsistent with the Airport Environs land use plan, and so for that to go forward, the city council would have to override that decision. We scheduled that for next week. We've actually pushed that back to September 12th. Again, that's part of the housing element implementation, so just want to kind of give you a feeling for that, that it is going forward, maybe not quite at the same pace that we had anticipated. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody from the audience wish to comment on the, on the, on Jim's report? Seeing none, moving on. Request for excused absences? Commissioners, any requests for excused absences? Commissioner Langford?
Yes, I'd like to request an excused absence for September 7th, please.
Denied. Just kidding. All right, so, and with that, we are adjourned at 7:02. Thank you.